Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the Rye Town Council meeting of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, bless this assemblage. Grant us the wisdom to make every decision fair-minded in the best interest for all its residents. Amen.
Thank you. Hope, please call the roll.
Counselperson, Pam Jaffe.
Here.
Counselperson Jill Axelrod.
Here.
Counselperson Thomas Nardi.
Here.
Counselperson Lindsay Jackson.
Here.
Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Here. Adoption of minutes of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. If there are no additions or corrections, may I have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First resolution is to set a date for the public hearing on Local Law Number Two of twenty twenty-three. This local law is to authorize the town to appoint a second deputy clerk. Currently, we have one deputy clerk, and we have two wonderful young women who work in the clerk's office, Paola and Stephanie. Both of their duties are very similar. And the, Hope, why don't you state what, why we need a second deputy clerk, what the duties are that can't be performed by other people?
Okay. We need someone that is authorized to certify documents, particularly when we receive a burial or crematory record. In order to allow it to be sent out, we have to certify the document. I certify, and right now, Paola could certify because she's a deputy. But there may be a time where I'm out or Paola's out, and we need one person that's in. And you really don't know. Anything could happen. One could be sick, one could be on vacation. Also, so many people come from out of town to get a certified record of a marriage, a marriage, and that has to be certified. And there's so many things that we have to certify that someone has to be on duty, because they don't make an appointment to get something certified. It has to be done.
And that, and that needs to be a deputy clerk. It cannot be an intermediate clerk or somebody like that.
No, you have to be.
Okay. And I would like to point out that there is no budgetary impact to this local law. So this is merely to set a date for the public hearing. And the date as set forth in the resolution is for the next meeting on April twentieth, twenty twenty-three. So may I have a motion and a second to set the date for the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is an important resolution. We are appointing Charles J. Zaba, otherwise known as Charlie Zaba, to be the new assessor for the town of Rye. Just as a background, our previous assessor Denise Canauer resigned effective February the tenth. And Gordon Casement, our current appraiser, has been in the, acting in the capacity of acting assessor for the period since February tenth. The town conducted an extensive search for a successor. We had eight applications, six of which resulted in an interview. We had previously appointed a, an extremely competent steering committee to do the initial interviews and make recommendation to the council. And last Tuesday, this past Tuesday, the council interviewed Charlie Zaba, who is currently the sole assessor in Haverstraw, and has recommended his, has approved his appointment to the position of assessor of the town of Rye. I'd like to have a motion and a second, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
I think we're very lucky to have Mr. Zaba here, returning to the town of Rye, so welcome. And I also want to commend Gary and Debbie and the volunteers who were on the canvassing committee, who dedicated their time to making sure we got the best candidate. Their work paid off.
The, I should say that the, the steering committee was comprised of myself and Debbie, but more importantly, our, the two attorneys who handle our taxer, where our work and Jeff Binder and Dan Tartaglia, three members of the Board of Assessment Review, Joan Feinstein, Randy Robinowitz, Raymond Skulky, one each from Rybrook, Porchester, and Rhine Neck, as well as our consultant, Edie McCarthy, who is the, also the assessor in, in the town of Greenberg. So the, the screening was done by a committee of people who know the, the work of the assessor and the assessment process. And the final decision, of course, was made by this town council after interviewing and asking very pertinent questions. So with that, did we have?
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, kind of sans the consultant, these individuals gave up their personal time to do this. So I think that should be recognized as a service to the community.
Absolutely. It was one of the, the better committees that I've ever been on, very knowledgeable people and very, very intensive questioning. I should also say, I mentioned it beforehand, Charlie comes to us not as a new person. He was formerly the appraiser in the town of Rye for a period of, I think, about ten years, Charlie?
Almost, a little less than twelve years.
Twelve years. So Charlie's very familiar with the town, with many of the people who he will be working with again, although in a different capacity. So we had a motion and a second? Please call the roll.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
And supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Charlie, would you like to come up and say something?
Yes.
Introduce yourself to the community? Oh, he's gonna have to learn a lot of new things. This wasn't like this before.
No, it wasn't. All right. I want to thank the board. I would like to thank the supervisor. I really appreciate the opportunity you're giving me. Very happy to be back. I'm happy to get to see the office and see my old coworkers and my new coworkers. I'm excited to get to work. There's some stuff I'd really like to put, put together. And I'm looking forward to working with the board and the supervisor in the future. One thing to the public, my door is always open. If you need to speak about anything, stop in. That's not a problem. I'll be happy to see you. And lastly, thank you again.
Thank you for accepting this position. Very good, Joe. Welcome back. Okay. Next resolution is authorizing the submission of a congressionally-directed spending request to Congressman Jamal Bowman for funding to make repairs to ensure the safety of critical infrastructure at Rye Town Park. This, what we're submitting to Congressman Bowman is the same thing that we have already submitted to Senator Schumer and Senator Gillibrand. They did not require a, a resolution. However, Congressman Bowman's office, however, the House procedures did request a resolution. And this is essentially to make repairs to the retaining wall at Rye Town Park that goes from the bathhouse towards the promenade, and also to replace the coping above the seawall near the south pavilion and the fence on top of the seawall, both of which have deteriorated. I should say, all, all three have deteriorated to the point that they're, they're actually dangerous. And so we are making that request to the congressman, and this is the resolution. The total price, by the way, the total number we're asking for, for all, all the work is, is a little bit over one point two million dollars. I have spoken with staff from both Senator Gillibrand's office and Senator Schumer's office, who agree that these repairs were necessary and would help to try to push this through the Congress. This is for the twenty twenty-four federal budget.
Are these, do we have a matching fund obligation?
No, there's no match on this. Unless we get, unless somehow the bid price goes over the amount that we get. But if, if our estimates are accurate, then there, there's no required batch. And I, I think we're putting the same resolution before the Rye Town Park Commission on, on Tuesday.
Certainly can. However, the grant is going in tomorrow. That's the deadline.
Well, we'll still get a resolution. We'll send it in anyway. Yes, assuming we get the money. And if we don't get the money, we may have to do the work anyway. So hopefully, we will get the grant. So motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Please call the roll, Hope.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod. Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
And supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you. The next two items are tax cert settlements. Is Jeff on the Zoom?
I believe he is.
May, put him big.
I'm trying.
Okay. There he is. You're on.
Patrick? Jeff, can you say something?
Yes, hi. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, let me say, Jeff is not here tonight because, because he just had surgery, and he looks pretty good for surgery. He won't be able to walk for a while, but, but he's joined us anyway. I wasn't mean enough to say he had to come in person. So Jeff, the first tax cert is for the Capitol Theater?
Right. This is a tax cert for one year at issue. The, it's twenty twenty, you know, this is a settlement that's been pretty long in the making, and our constituent members at, in the village of Porchester are aware of this. And they're aware of the amount of refunds that this would entail, relatively de minimis, but, you know, not, nothing. The village, the village refund is something on the magnitude of just over fifteen thousand, and the school district's about thirty-two thousand. And this is for one year, twenty twenty. And I would recommend to the board that, that they adopt the settlement.
Any questions?
Is this assessment, I'm looking here at the roll year, it's twenty twenty, was this assessment revised based on the pandemic and the function of the Capitol Theater?
It is COVID. COVID came into play. Their, their financials look ahead. So that's basically twenty nineteen, you know, when COVID, you know, was first coming out. But it's, it's, it's the twenty nineteen year for their income and expenses.
Twenty twenty roll year.
It's twenty twenty roll, but yeah.
Okay. Further questions? Motion and a second then, please? Please call the roll.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
And supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. The next tax cert is Cedar Oak Development Corp., sixty-three Traverse Avenue. This is for three years?
Yes, this for three years. This, this building is a small apartment building on Traverse. And this settlement represents quite a distance, quite a savings from, you know, what they were initially asking for. The refunds, the total refunds for all years, the village refund is just over seven thousand dollars. The school district is just over fourteen thousand dollars. And we're gonna try to get the, the twenty twenty-two AV roll adjusted so that those numbers stick. If we don't, then they go up, not insubstantially, but we'll, we'll make, we'll make the lower numbers happen. So I have to talk to Charlie.
Any questions from the board? I think that's a pretty good settlement for three years. And of course, you, you spoke to the school district and the village.
Yeah, for both of these settlements, they affect the school district and the village. So I alerted them at the same time about both.
Thank you. Motion and a second, please?
I'll make the motion.
Call the roll, please.
By the way, just, just to clarify, that's not the only time, you know, the most recent notification of this is not the only time they've been made aware of that. We've been having regular meetings, and it's come up as, as a case that could settle. And now it has.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
And supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. And our last resolution is authorizing the town to enter a contract with Vinco Builders to re-roof, for the re-roofing and facade improvements to the Crawford Park Cottage. That's our caretaker's cottage for an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars. And you have the backup here. The, the winning bid of ninety-four eight hundred was superior to two other bids of one fourteen five and one fourteen two nine three, and the big losing bid of four hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred. So it's quite a difference. Vinco has done a lot of work for us in the past. Let me just check. I know that they did the pavilion roof. I think they did three times. They, they have contracted with us three times, including the successful re-roofing of the Crawford Pavilion. And they have done very satisfactory work, and we have a letter of recommendation to take this bid by Gary Gianfrancisco, our architect.
This is a total tear down of the roof, right down to the rafters?
I'm, I'm guessing that it is, but Tommy, I don't, I don't recollect the, the specs myself.
Vic, Vic worked with Gary Gianfrancisco on putting together the specs. Vic, do you want to speak to that?
Vic Federico, Director of Grounds Facilities. Tom, yes, right down to the rafters.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Questions?
Work take, and where is the caretaker going to stay this time?
I think he's gonna, I think he's gonna be there. It's the roof and facade.
They don't have to move out.
Yeah.
Roof and facade, it's not the.
The roof demo is a.
They'll tear it down, and then they'll cover what they strip down. And, you know, they'll tear it down. They'll probably do one side at a time, rip down, put the plywood up, then do the backside, tear it down, put the plywood up, and then cover, and then go from there.
Okay.
All right. As well, you should be, Madam Councilwoman. Thank you. Did we have a motion and a second? Motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Did we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
We have, we have a picture of the lovely cottage up on the, on the screen showing, showing the facade and roof repairs that are needed. It's got to be lovely.
Yeah, that thing's been band-aided so many times, it needs a total ripoff. And that's what I was.
One more thing that we're gonna. Because they're gonna come in, and they're gonna stomp all over the shrubs and everything else there. So we will rip them out before. And hopefully, we have enough in the budget to replant around the house.
Well, will we transplant the shrubs that are there?
Uh, some of these are so old, no.
Now, couldn't we call the roll? Okay.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Thank you. Crawford report?
Uh, yeah.
I do.
Hello, everyone.
I love that picture.
Me too.
Do you remember when we were debating whether to do the, the front walk? I think we, we made the right decision.
I know that's not it, really. Okay. It is a beautiful picture. Okay, so first, we're gonna look at the same metrics we looked at the last time. It's a little bit of a new format. But inquiries to date, we have a hundred and sixteen. Considering we're only into ten weeks, that's a lot compared to last year at this time, we had a hundred and one. So about a fifteen percent increase in inquiries from a year ago. In the bookings, we are up to ninety-nine contracts, meaning their deposits are in, and the plan is to execute those events, compared to seventy-five from last year. We have nine proposals in the queue. And we have five events booked for twenty twenty-four. For the events that we have for the municipal organizations.
Twenty twenty-four, we have nine already?
Five.
Five.
Mm-hmm. It's amazing, isn't it? I mean, I'm, I'm really surprised, but it's a good thing. So the events that we have where the fees are waived, we have so far thirty-three booked for the year. And the revenue that's being waived is eighty-seven thousand at this point. And the bulk of the usages with the Porchester school system, but then we also have the Scouts and Rybrook. Okay? Any questions on those numbers? So here's everybody's favorite page, the revenue page. And hopefully, I've simplified it so that it's clear. And if it's not, please don't hesitate to interrupt me. Okay, so the first column is revenue that has come in, in the past ten weeks. Okay? So we have, January, we had two point three thousand, then fifteen point nine thousand, and eighteen thousand year to date. And just the way that's been calculated is it's the cash that we've received minus security deposits and minus gratuities. So that will give us the adjusted numbers for each of those months. Okay? For rental fees, these are dollars that we have already executed the event. We have deducted, again, the security deposit and the staff gratuity, and we are at five thousand four hundred year to date. The labor costs are basically just that. If you move over to the next event revenue column, that is the adjusted revenue minus the labor cost. So executed event fees minus labor cost is how we arrived at the three point, three thousand seven hundred. For waived fees, these are, again, events that have been executed year to date. We are looking at twelve thousand eight hundred so far. And that is the information I can share.
Thank you. Questions?
Do we have a breakdown for the rentals of residents versus non-residents?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
And do we have that broken down by municipality, too, or?
Uh, well, there isn't any municipality that, outside of ours.
What I'm saying is, based on residency, Rybrook, Porchester.
Oh, sure, sure. We could do that.
That would be
Okay.
good to see who's using the park. I'm actually happy to see that we waived eighty-seven thousand in fees. That means the community's using it, which is
They absolutely are, yes.
Important.
So you'd like to see what the percentages of each of the groups?
Breakdown, correct.
No problem. Any other questions? Okay, just to give you a quick update on the winter music series. We have booked the Show Jam, Jam Show, I think, acoustic duo that will be here on March thirty-first. That's a Friday evening. I would encourage you all to come. We're gonna have sort of a different format. It's gonna be more of a, a casual pub-type format as opposed to people sitting in rows, just listening to the music. They'll be able to dance if they'd like to. So it should be a fun evening. And then, of course, we have the Philharmonic back for their third and final winter performance on the sixteenth of April. Okay?
I would urge everybody sitting up here and watching at home to come to these performances. I've been to the two Philharmonic performances, actually Chamber Music. They are wonderful. And the, the acoustics in the great hall are fabulous. I mean, I know, if you haven't been here listening to music in Crawford Mansion, it's tough to believe, but it's actually Philharmonic quality down there. And I can't wait to hear the acoustic duo playing there. And we're waiting, we're waiting to get a big rock band in to see, see if we can.
We'll do that in the summertime.
This is the first time that we're kind of breaking off from the classical slash jazz genre.
Well, in the inside, because, because
Inside, I meant.
Yeah, outside, last year, we had jazz.
Yeah.
And, and the classical and things.
Yeah.
And salsa.
And salsa.
And they will all be back again this year. They're already booked.
Inside, we've typically had jazz and classical, so let's mix it up a bit.
We're, we're looking, you know, anybody watching here, welcome to suggest their favorite band. We, Camille will be happy to approach them and say, would you like to come to Crap Crawford Mansion?
No one ever says no to that, so.
You know, it would be great.
To have a rock band, you really need to have it outside, because it's, to have a rock band inside, it's, it's gonna be a little loud.
We'll see. But we want to get all types of. We'll see. But we want to get all types of music, you know, and even, I'm, I'm hoping that we can get some, some plays back here as well. You know, something for everybody's taste in the town of Rye. All right, thank you very much, Camille. Vic?
On a play this summer in one of our conversations?
I don't have a memory of that. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You want to check with her?
I'm going to check on it.
Sure.
If you're looking for a place.
Vic? No more reports?
I have a question.
You have a question, okay.
Sorry.
Well, it's that one here. If we are going to.
Be opening Edna's again this summer, I would recommend having costs lined up by the April meeting so we can actually open on time, correct?
I'm sorry, opening.
I didn't hear. The cafe.
Cafe.
Got it. Edna's. So we should have our costs lined up for the council to look at by April if you could, so we can actually open prior to Memorial Day and get the benefit of the full summer.
Yes, be no problem.
Thank you, Vic.
Thank you. I don't think Davey's on. Is Davey on? Is that Davey I see up there?
Yes. Yeah, Dave was in attendance.
Dave is very little. Can we make Dave, Dave big?
I like to say little.
Oh, do we want to?
You're a child. Is that what you asked?
I'm here.
He is there. What do you have for us, sir?
I'm having a little trouble hearing you, but, you know, nothing new to report. We are in, in the middle of the audit. The, the field work was done a couple of weeks ago. There's some follow-up items that we have to wait for to, to take place, to provide them, but we're, we're on schedule with, with the audit. Everything looks good. No complaints so far. You know, I provided the February report for the receivables. Overall, our receivables outstanding as of February 28th, which does not include school, that will be shown on the March report, is a little over a half percent of the, the levies, which is the lowest it's been in 20 years in my time here. So the impact of that is, you know, if the receivables are low, the, the town has more cash on hand. And with the interest rates being high, the town earns more interest, and it was about 46,000 it earned just from TD Bank for, for the month of February. So that's, that's higher revenue than expected, and that's good news.
So overall, how do you view the town's financial position?
Well, our fund balance is very, very strong. Our, our cash flow is, is very strong, so we're in very strong financial position.
Great. I think that the residents would like to hear this, especially with what's happening in the banking industry these days. I'm sure all of our banks are very strong. We, we only bank with major banks, so.
Right. TD Bank is a very sound bank, and it has a lot of controls in place. We also have money with New York Class, which is municipal investment. So, yeah, we, we may have some small other accounts, but they're FDIC insured for the, the smaller banks that we do business with.
Thank you. And congratulations on getting past the March 15th corporate due date.
It's always, it's always a little nip and tuck, but we get there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Patrick's Day.
Thank you.
You did hear that?
Great. Absolutely. All right. Is Nick on?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, Mayor of the Town Council. How are you?
Feeling?
Okay, pretty good, good, good.
Good. Your, your written report submitted, what do you have to tell the community?
Just, just two other points I'd like to bring to the taxpayers of the town of Rye. Number, number one, I am very close to approving all the figures and bills for the, the new 2023 county and town. Excuse me, which hopefully will be sent out latter part of next week, so everyone should have it by April 1st. There is not a large increase in taxes, so nobody has to get overly concerned. Number two, it's my habit to send out a delinquent notice two weeks after the final date of collection in Ry Brook. That was February 28th. There are 138 unpaid second installments in Ry Brook that we'd like to get cleaned up because the town has to guarantee that levy. So it's a, it's a small amount, but it's good to get all that in before they start the new payments. So any questions for me?
Not for me. Thank you, Nick. Thank you. Okay. Have a good evening then. Thank you, Nick. I don't know if the town, I don't know if the town attorney has anything else. I don't think so, unless he wants to pipe up. Hope, your clerk, your clerk's report is submitted. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing to add. Well, my dear, well, we had two successful days for the municipal, oh, two successful days for the mobile shredder. The county is really great with supplying that service. We had one day for the municipals. We're, we worked with the Village of Portchester to get a lot of documents that were, where they reached that disposal date and to shred, and, and everything scanned, and then for the residents this past Saturday, so.
Good.
That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Members of the council, any comments? We don't have any holidays coming up right now? Happy St. Patrick's Day, other than that. We do have Passover coming, so that's on April the 5th.
Do you want to remind people there is a community cleanup coming on April 29th? Our sites are at the Pacilipo Center for the Village of Ry Brook. We are actually doing the Edith Reed Preserve for the City of Ry. We are doing, of course, Crawford. Vic, we are planting, correct? Wildflowers?
Not sure yet.
Okay, and then the marinek.
It'll be native. It'll be native.
It'll be native plantings, which is great. And then the marinek is the cleaning of basically an estuary stream going into the sound. So good array of activities, a good day. I actually treat my fellow council members to come. I may be in DC, so I'm hoping other people can come and visit the sites and cheer on our neighbors for doing good work.
Thank you, Pam. You, you and the Sustainability Committee are doing a terrific job. Congratulations, terrific.
It's just a small and mighty little army of municipalities working together.
No, it's good. It's great cooperation, all of us. Do we have anybody on Facebook?
No, we've gotten a bunch of likes and loves, but no words.
What are they liking and loving?
Just us in general.
Introducing Charlie. There were a bunch of things.
So I guess we made a good choice.
Exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.